All right. Thank you, everybody. It is 6:30 and tonight we have a work session with one item on our agenda, which is the Parks and Recreation Sales Tax Renewal Discussion with Laura Smith and Penn Albany.
Thank you. And I'm going to start with the end in mind because I know there's a lot of information that was provided in the memo yesterday. We'll cover a lot of ground this evening, but please remember that tonight is not a decision-making night. Tonight is a time to really just start to, as we've been doing internally as staff, really pull together all of the work that we've done over the last several years in anticipation of the renewal of the Parks and Recreation Sales Tax, so that we can start thinking about what might be appropriate. We've already sort of crossed the bridge and said we want to renew it. So now we think about what are our wants, what are our needs, what's an appropriate rate. So we're going to talk tonight about, if you'll pull up the, I put a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, which is short. I'm going to work mostly from the memo that was included in the packet. If you'll go to the first slide, please. So just kind of consistent with the format and the way we laid it out in the memo for you, we're going to talk a little bit just about the background and the history of the current sales tax, because I always think it's important to know where we started from and the decisions that went into the initial placement of that sales tax on the ballot back in 2012. Then I want to talk a little bit about how we've used the sales tax. Since 2013, one of the important things when we go ask for particularly renewal of a sales tax is to be able to show that we're accountable to the voters for the things that we said we were going to do. Then we'll talk about the expenditure considerations that we have for the next potential renewal period of the sales tax and beyond. We'll talk a little bit about our sales tax capacity and touch briefly on the mail ballot calendar and process, and then talk about next steps. So next slide, please. So it's covered in a lot more detail in the memo that was included in your packet. But this current Parks and Recreation Sales Tax was recommended, was a recommendation that came out of a swimming pool task force. It was actually the second swimming pool task force that had been formed over the course of several years. The first came forward with a recommendation for, I believe, a replacement of the pool somewhere in the neighborhood of $6 or $7 million. And it coincided, that first task force work coincided with the revision of the FEMA floodplain and the significant stormwater improvements that we were facing. And the council at that time said, you're going to have to put that recommendation on the shelf. We have some other more pressing priorities. And so when the time is right, you know, we want to come back and revisit that. So several years later, as that pool continued to age, it was built originally in 1956, had some major renovations and upgrades in the late 90s, and then essentially nothing through that period of time. But we were reaching a point where just that the pool structure itself had exceeded its useful life. We were, it was touch and go every season when it came to opening and operating the pool, whether or not we would have the financial resources available to be able to make any necessary repairs. And, and then as if we were able to open the doors each season, we just sort of crossed our fingers and hope that we didn't have a significant issue that arose. So it was really putting a lot of sort of pressure and strain and uncertainty on the general fund budget, which has historically been responsible for funding all of our parks and recreation services up to this point. So when the second task force was formed, and they were tasked with not only coming up with a recommendation for location, but a budget overall and a way to pay for the improvements. So they came back to the city council at that time with a recommendation to reconstruct the pool in Anderson Park through a design-build process, something more in the neighborhood of about $4 to $5 million. And they recommended funding that with a quarter cent sales tax. As that recommendation came forward and was considered by the council, the council had some ongoing discussion about, okay, this is great. We know the issues that we're facing with the pool, but we also know that we don't have sufficient funds and we've deferred a tremendous amount of maintenance here at the Powell Community Center. We don't really have a master plan for our outdoor park system. And so we're sort of being short-sighted if we only go ask for the quarter cent, which would essentially fund just the rebuild of the pool and ignore all these other needs that we have sort of piling up in the background. So the council took that recommendation and made the modification at that time to take forward a 3.8 cent sales tax based on all of those other factors and considerations. That was put before the voters on the general election in November of 2012. And as with our other dedicated sales tax, it does have a 10-year sunset. So the current Parks and Recreation Sales Tax will expire March 31st of 2023. It has generated roughly $7.79 million since its inception. And we anticipate that it will generate about another 1.26 million before its expiration date next March. So next slide, please. And you'll see, included in your memo, I didn't put it in the PowerPoint, but the biggest advocates, and we had a group that went out and very specifically raised support and favor was the swim team, the Mission Marlin Swim Team, because it's been their home base for several years. But you can see that certainly when we compare it to the margin with which our recent street sales tax was renewed, the sales tax was not renewed by an overwhelming margin, 56 or 53.83% yes and 46.17% no. So since 2013, our, basically our capital funding for Parks and Recreation has come from two sources. This 3.8 cent sales tax, which is now generating in 2021, actual revenues just slightly over $1 million a year, and special Parks and Recreation Funds, which is a third of the alcohol tax. So a third goes into the general fund, a third goes into the special alcohol fund, and a third goes into a special Parks and Recreation Fund. So that has been increasing over the years. In 2021, we generated about $90,000 a year. So obviously, we weren't tackling large-scale capital projects with, with those dollars. So what have we accomplished since 2013? And again, as I mentioned, I think it's important to think about this because as we go forward and sort of tell the story of where we've been and where we want to go, that accountability to our residents and to our voters is key. But when the sales tax was originally passed, there was sort of a hierarchy of needs that was identified in terms of how the sales tax dollars would be spent. Obviously, the rebuild and reconstruction of the Mission Family Aquatic Center was at the top of that list. Over the life of the sales tax to this point, it's required about 60% of annual revenues to fund the debt service on. So the city issued debt for that rebuild, 10-year debt level, annual debt service payments of approximately $530,000 a year, paid exclusively from the Parks and Recreation Sales Tax revenues. Next in line was deferred maintenance at the Powell Community Center. And so you've seen a number of projects over the years, replacement of cardio equipment, replacement of weight equipment, resurfacing of gym floors, significant work in the indoor aquatic center, re-carpeting, repainting of the conference center, replacement of tables and chairs, and all manner of, of other things. It just takes a significant amount of money to keep this building operational and and attractive and attracting members and rental patrons. So we had that focus here. Also, the creation of a Parks Master Plan. So the city didn't have an overall overarching Parks Master Plan in place. In the time that I've been here, I think there have been three iterations or had been prior to this point, three iterations of sort of internal or citizen task force efforts to look at park master planning. It was a really challenging process. And we had a lot, we spent a lot of time in rooms talking about, you know, it would be just whoever decided to show up. And so you would have, we want restrooms in all of our parks. No, people should use the restroom before they leave home and go to the park. We want water fountains in our parks. No, people should bring their water bottles to their parks. And so there's a lot of push and pull because it wasn't really a statistically valid method of going out and surveying. And so sort of sometimes the loudest voices in the room won out in terms of the amenities and the priorities that they wanted to see. And we never really made much progress, even when we could land on some consensus or some common goals, because there was no funding source to implement that. So we had, and Councilmember Crane probably remembers all, but there's three different versions of park master plans over the years that really never got off the ground. So one of the first things that we did following approval of this Parks and Recreation Sales Tax was to hire Confluence as the consultant to conduct the park master plan. They worked in partnership with ETC Institute to do a statistically valid sort of mini-direction finder survey that, specific to parks, that informed a lot of that. And then we had a very public-facing process building on that and developing the plan. The plan has not been, in some respects, without its lack of critics as well, because it created a very long list of, again, priorities. And so sorting through those priorities, and it applied to our outdoor park system, the community center, the Mission Family Aquatic Center. And in that master plan, it even speaks to the fact of kind of the priorities identified with passage of the sales tax and identifying the outdoor park system in particular as one that had historically been sort of neglected in terms of investment and improvements. And that really, this master plan was intended to build that out and help create a foundation upon potentially renewal of the sales tax to be able to move forward to address those deficiencies and the things that people really wanted to see. We also looked to create maintenance reserve funds for the community center and the Mission Family Aquatic Center. We're still in catch-up mode in many respects. So while we haven't built huge reserve funds, we do have fund balance that we've carried forward each year, which has allowed us to account for any other emergency issue that might pop up or to address things in, in our plan. But that, that building of reserve funds, planning for ongoing maintenance was a theme that was very important with passage of the, the sales tax. And then we've developed conceptual plans for the outdoor park improvement. So we've taken that overarching master plan and over the course of the last couple of years, we've made, I think, good progress in developing conceptual plans for, at least for three, maybe four of our outdoor parks in anticipation, again, of if the revenue stream is renewed, what, what are our priorities and how do we want to tackle that? And then with some of the funds that have been available, we've begun implementation of the outdoor park improvement. So the significant redo of the Anderson Park Tennis Courts, the start of the work that we're doing in Mohawk Park with the Phase 1A, and, and some other things here and there. So let's go to next slide, please. So again, through this process, I think the question about what do our residents want to see has been really important, whether that was through creation of swimming pool task forces or park planning task forces or the Parks Master Plan process. And then as we moved into the 2021 Direction Finder Survey, and we really wanted to sort of understand and test against some of the priorities of our residents, because there had been a, a period of time, the survey that was done in connection with the Parks Master Plan was done in 2015. So one of the things that we wanted to do is make sure that the amenities that the community wanted to see were still consistent with those that had been identified through the master plan. And we'll talk about some of those conceptual plans as we move through this presentation. But one of the really strong themes that we heard, we felt it internally, we heard it from council, we heard it from the Parks Recreation and Tree Commission, it was validated in the 2021 Direction Finder Survey, was that our residents wanted to see an emphasis on maintenance of the park. So not only the addition of new things, but to have a focus on an emphasis on doing a better job of taking care of the amenities that we do have. And you, and you see that reflected just in a couple of these slides, which you've seen before. Next slide, please. And then we asked a question about the top five amenities that our residents would most like to see included in Mission, Missions Outdoor Parks, permanent restroom facilities, definitely far and away at the top of the list, followed about evenly by dog park, upgraded shelter houses and native plantings. Then more trees. And then you started to move into the playground equipment, the splash pads, those, those sorts of things. Interestingly, that, we did see a little bit of a shift in this 2021 survey. There was a much more emphasis on just the natural green space. We think in part driven just because of the fact we did the survey in the midst of a pandemic and people were looking for more outdoor spaces within which to recreate. But we, so we did see some shifts and that has influenced some of the decision-making and the conversations as we've moved through the conceptual planning processes. To next slide, please. So what are the needs and the wants as we move forward into the future? Again, that consistent theme about park maintenance, what we have, and then making sure we're planning to take care of anything new that we add. We've learned that lesson. If we haven't learned that lesson about not planning for replacement and maintenance, then shame on us. So making sure that maintenance is a top priority. Outdoor park improvements, again, very high on the list, was the, intended to be the next phase. Some remaining community center capital projects and maintenance. I think you all know that we addressed some of the, the major mechanical systems and components through the FCIP program improvements, which was not funded in any way, shape, or form with Parks and Recreation Sales Tax revenue. So we've relied on that 2 million plus in improvements that went into this building to be repaid through the energy savings and then supported by the general fund. So did not, that, and that took a tremendous amount of strain, quite honestly, off of some of the things that needed to occur in this facility. And it is probably one of the biggest catalysts for allowing us to move forward in the way that we are with Mohawk Phase 1 and have that underway. Mission Family Aquatic Center Capital Projects and Maintenance is something, we built it. It's now 10, you know, almost 10 years old, and we need to think about how we take care of that moving forward. And then other things that we may want to consider in the future, trail expansion. So the addition of trails, again, in every Direction Finder Survey since 2007, has been a high priority of our residents. So as we think about where, not just the walking trails within the parks. So we've looked at in the conceptual planning, expanding those, those walking trail opportunities within the parks. But I think there's also and potentially an appetite for other locations throughout the community where we might add trails. This council has talked on several occasions and expressed an interest in the acquisition of additional green space where possible. It's limited in a two and a half square mile community that's mostly developed, but certainly something to think about. And then expansion and maintenance of the urban tree canopy. So I did want to kind of just touch on a couple of things before we dive a little bit in, deeper into each of these categories about sort of needs and wants. And particularly, I'm going to ask Penn to come up and talk about the park maintenance side. But just a couple of other things to kind of underscore the history of the sales tax. So as it relates to the, the language of the sales taxes written very broadly. So it allowed for the acquisition, the equipping, the payment of debt service, but also the operation of any parks and recreation-related amenities. At the time that the sales tax was originally passed, the community center in 2007, 2008 had gone, kind of undergone a serious look at feasibility and cost, a cost recovery analysis. And it had been improving its cost recovery percentages slowly to achieve somewhere in that 80 to 85% cost recovery. But there were still some struggles with that. And so in the first year of, after the sales tax was implemented, the council made the decision to transfer $100,000 from the Parks and Recreation Sales Tax into the operating budget of the community center. The second year, we transferred $25,000. And then the council said, no more. We want all of these sales tax dollars to be dedicated to capital improvements and larger maintenance projects. So out of that 770 or 7 million plus, 7.8 million roughly, that has been collected since 2013, only $125,000 of that has actually gone to operations. But something I think we want to think about as we move through the conversation with renewal of a sales tax is, do we want to leave that degree of flexibility in with future consideration? It, it becomes, with the exception of if an issue is tied to specific debt, it is then completely at the discretion of the council each year during their annual budget process about how you want to allocate those resources. And so as you can kind of see, since 2014, the council has said, no, we don't want to dedicate any of that to operating expenses. Okay. So I think with that, I'm going to ask Penn to come up, again, the biggest, one of the biggest categories, and I know where he and his staff have spent a tremendous amount of time over the last probably 12 months, is really looking at building out a pro forma for talking about maintenance standards. What's the standard of maintenance that we want to achieve in our outdoor park system? What does it take to get us there in terms of people and equipment and other services? And so we've built that out and we want to, I'll let him kind of come and talk. And we've given you a summary sheet. Next slide, please. And this one's really tiny to see on the screen. But essentially what they've done is they've created a budget for each park or each area that's maintained, whether that be the Rock Creek Trail or Anderson Park. And so the handout at your place that looks like this is the summary sheet of all of that detail. So just know there's a tremendous amount in each of these categories, but he'll kind of speak to this tonight and, and how we anticipate or what we anticipate. We didn't include the dollar amount in, in the memo that went out yesterday. So we'll talk about that tonight. But I think you'll see as we get to the end of the presentation, maintenance dollars are currently not being taken out of the Parks and Recreation Sales Tax in terms of contractual mowing, some personnel services and those sorts of things. So we'll highlight, that's not a big scary number, like some of the other ones that, you know, maybe potentially appeared in, in here in, in terms of that need and wishlist. But Penn, if you'll come kind of talk about what you've, what you've looked at and what we hope to accomplish in the future.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So prior to my coming here, Public Works was responsible for anything park-related, which as you know, they've got their own set of tasks on the public works side, the street side. And understandably, some things just didn't factor into the priority list. We were able to, the community center re-apply one of the vacant positions of maintenance into Parks and Recreation Outdoor Park Technician exclusively. So that is Taylor Schaefer, and it's now on one man's shoulders to do what a team of Public Works was doing. And I think what he's able to do is rather than a team of, you know, three to five weekly splitting up certain tasks, one individual is able to take on the accountability and go through each of the, the needs of every park. And we've definitely seen improvement on care. The accountability is obviously there. He and I get to sit down and discuss, you know, safety considerations, needs within each park, feedback that we get from council as well as residents, and then kind of adjust the projects as they arise. So we hope you've noticed the, the increased attention and care. With that said, there are really three levels of standard of maintenance. In, in, in large terms, it's easier to see like Streamway Park is kind of a more natural habitat and one that's a little bit more hands-off. And we would put that in a category three. Then there's middle tiers where parks don't get used very much, but we want to make sure that the trails are trimmed, they're edged, there aren't potholes in the middle of fields that could potentially be used. And then obviously, any park that's got a playground, we, we make sure that we inspect that monthly and get all of those fixes in place. And then we'd put those types of things, things that are needed to be done more consistently every other week or monthly as a category one standard. And so what Taylor and I were able to do over the last 12 months is really go through each of the tasks associated with the parks, break them into quantitative measures that were able to be compared from one park to the next, to the next. And so this handout was originally designed to be a snapshot of how much it costs to really take care of a park system. So when you see those numbers down there, it factors in things like mowing, trimming, edging, litter control, planting, mulching, all of those elements, leak or leaf removal, and kind of puts them into a category. We, we put utilities in when there were bathrooms, we put cleaning where there are restrooms, and we put facility maintenance and shade sales where, where shade systems need to come in and go out like Legacy Park. And so each of them are a little bit different. However, they are broken into four primary categories, turf care, landscaping. So that would be pruning, tree replacement, the leaf removal, snow removal, and then sustainable practices, which has been a priority focus of mission, which includes environmentally friendly pest control, perennial native plant care, obviously utilities and playground inspections, litter control, recycling, and making sure that any kind of maintenance is, is using the highest level of sustainability attention. And then the last element is facility maintenance, pavilions, parking lots, those types of things. So any, any kind of amenity like a bench or trash receptacles would be folded into that and, and considered. But so what we did is we factored in some of the labor associated with that, the, the typical weekly and then monthly allotment of time that it would take, the cost obviously of, of labor hours. And then you'll notice on the far right, it's labeled as PT hours. So I'm looking on the slide here, on the far right. And is this in the, the big one? So the very back page of the handout is a little bit easier to see. The far right column is, is a tabulation of all of the staff hours outside of what Taylor's doing right now for Parks and Recreation. And that would be associated with that specific park. But really, we tried to make it so that it was comparable from one park to the next, easy to digest, easy for you to see, okay, well, this is a bigger park, there's more costs associated with it. And then we tried to factor in a cost per acre, which is underneath that subtotal for each park, so that you can see that there are economies of scale for larger parks. And some of these smaller pocket parks really need an infusion of resources that may not be a lot of money, but based off of the square footage, it, it can reflect like it is. So with that said, we tried to gather up all of those, give you a, an itemized list of all of the maintenance needs and considerations, and then give you a total number on the back page, which, did you want to speak to that later? I can do that now, too.
And I have one quick question, if I could.
Yeah.
On the, on the cost per acre, that's not including the additional staff hours, right? That's just the maintenance costs.
So the cost per So the cost per acre includes the staffing costs that are included in each park. So it does. Yeah. And so, I mean, in terms of looking at it holistically, obviously there is some monies that are already inputs in our system right now. We've got a full-time employee. So his, his hourly wage plus, you know, health benefits is factored in. And so we subtracted that off of the last line item. We've got things like mowing and trimming that are already subcontracted out. I built those into each of the parks so that you could see the cost per park. But obviously, since we've accounted for that money in our current budget, we backed that out of the total cost. We backed out. I don't have it in front of me. We backed out the existing maintenance budget, which is fifty thousand dollars. And then we backed out the existing tree and shrub maintenance. And so you're left with forty thousand dollars of monies that are still needed. Plus then, when you factor in the additional labor and hours associated with that, and I think we use twenty dollars as the benchmark, we would need to come up with an additional fifty-nine thousand dollars of labor infused monies to reach a hundred thousand dollars of additional cost to get us to a point where we could watch, walk to any of our parks and feel like they're all maintained at a similar standard from one part to the next, excluding some of the natural trail features of Streamway.
Penn, could I ask you a question?
You bet.
We don't have a projected dog park. How are those numbers established?
So I don't have the dog park in front of me, but essentially it's similar elements. You consider inputs like irrigation system. You consider things like trash remediation, picking up fecal matter, replacing sod, top dressing, air rating, and things like water bills, fence repair, those types of things. So a lot of the, a lot of the maintenance associated with a fence opening and closing and lights being turned on and off, and just the repetitive use was factored into that. And then it is pretty labor intensive because it's one acre and you're just seeing hundreds, sometimes thousands of dogs within a one to two day period. And so there's a lot of manual effort that got, that has to be put into maintaining that to a, a nice, clean and healthy standard. And we've noticed anytime you put things like turf, trees, you know, natural inputs, they die really quickly if you don't have an active water system. And so irrigation is another expensive element of a dog park. You bet.
Let me just touch on, expand on that though, because I think part of your question, if I might read into it is, why is it included in this cost since we don't have a dog park now? And so I think we're, we're all familiar that as we've moved through some of the conversations around the dog park over the last year or two years, particularly for the Parks Recreation and Tree Commission, they wanted to make sure that, that we were factoring in the cost of maintenance of a dog park and all those other facilities. So the way we've built it with a model for each park kind of allows us to plug and play a little bit as we move forward. So Penn really built this model based on if we were to build out all of our conceptual plans, this is kind of where we would be in the future. If we don't have a dog park, if we don't have some other amenity that's potentially anticipated, then those costs can be adjusted. But we've got the model built and we can kind of determine. And I think if you would just, if, you know, you touched on it briefly, but, and when you look at the hours, some of the hours can be. And we can get into this in more detail, but it looks like a lot of hours, particularly I think when, when you look at some of the smaller parks. But this is really reflective of moving us to a much different standard than what exists today. And if you flip to that back page of this handout, you'll see there's almost six thousand total additional hours that we think would be required. And this is also picking up things like the bus stop and the transit center, which we have, you know, the responsibility to maintain. This is maintaining the Rock Creek Trail, not just the sort of parks proper as we think of them perhaps. So if you look at that and you divide that, he's, he's shown here, if you were to look at full-time equivalents, it's two point eight six or, you know, maybe closer to three or roughly five part-time positions. So there's some flexibility. Again, some of this will depend on phasing of, you know, of improvements. But I'll give you a, a great example that I haven't even passed on to Penn. But last week when we were at Legacy Park and I was over setting up for the event, I mean, I have a list. There's a trash can lid that's cracked and that needs to be replaced. The mud mitt stations are rusted and need to be repainted or have the lids replaced on them. And there are three seats on the picnic tables that are loose and wobbly and need to be either replaced or fastened down. And while Taylor is able to have already had a tremendous impact on our park system, that, those are the kinds of things that will get us to kind of that next, even that next level. And they're not anything that you notice when you drive by, but when you're over picking up trash and getting ready to have an event, they became very visible and very obvious. So you will see sort of, I, I think it, part of our conversation as we move through the overall budget process is regardless of the renewal rate for a sales tax or if the sales tax were to be renewed, I think this increased maintenance and attention to our outdoor parks is something that we'll be talking about and bringing forward a proposal. And that we would anticipate that this would be a general fund impact primarily and not something that would be taken out of, of the Parks and Recreation Sales Tax.
Penn, I had a question.
Yes.
So if Taylor ever goes on vacation or is sick, what's kind of the plan? He's wonderful, by the way. I'm really glad we have him. What's kind of the plan B if he's not around?
Yeah. So we've got two full-time maintenance here at the community center. So the litter control elements are divided among them, those two. And then we reach out to a, a public works employee and, and ask for them to help. And then becomes bare minimum essentially for that week.
Okay.
So they wouldn't be doing anything like weeding or mulching, those types of things. But it'd really be replacing mud mitt, you know, pickup bags and, and litter control.
Okay. And so in this proposal, then we're not saying this is all for Taylor to do. This would be hiring three people basically or five part-time people to do this.
Correct. This would be above and beyond what Taylor is currently doing. And, you know, things like weeding, he doesn't really get an opportunity to do that. Thank goodness for adopted park groups who've, we've been able to, you know, synergize with them and utilize their man-hours and can get a lot of these weeding type elements hammered out pretty quickly. But those would be things that would obviously get us to that next level. Yes.
With regards to the bus stop and the transit center, does the county give us any funds for supporting that effort to maintain those? Is that an obligation that we have to the county to maintain that? I don't know what the history is, that that, that has become our responsibility.
Yeah. And I'm not too sure of the history either, aside from, hey, this is on your property. Make sure it looks beautiful. And the bus stops.
Yeah. I was wondering if the county has any kind of support for that cost or through grants or anything, or is there, is there an interlocal agreement?
There is an interlocal agreement that we took on the responsibility. So the, the transit facilities here in Mission, including the transit center, were, were constructed primarily with the use of, of Tiger Grant Funds several years ago. And so the county was the lead there and is, but at the time, the council then agreed to take on the ongoing maintenance of the transit stop, which includes snow removal and, you know, maintenance of whatever landscaping is, is there. I'd have to go back and look and see who's responsible for replacement of things like pitches. I know they've come in as they've changed and rebranded. They've changed some things, but again, I think just some of the clouding of the panels in the transit center. And so we, we need to, we do need to take another look at that and probably revisit that with the, you know, potentially with the county.
Is that an interlocal agreement with the county or is it with the whole metro?
It's with the Johnson County.
Okay. Because I understand that the county is talking about taking that control of, over that. Is that correct?
Taking, I'm sorry, taking back control of the transit?
Yeah. Well, they, they had done it as part of the metro system. And so they were talking about, I don't know that they have taken it back yet. In terms of the issue of cost recovery, are we going to talk a little bit about that? Because it seems to me that there are elements of this that are base operations. And then there are elements that, you know, should be allocated for cost recovery. And the, the parks aspect of it is not included in the cost recovery calculation. Is that correct?
That is correct. We currently do not look at cost recovery rates or have established cost recovery rates for either the outdoor aquatic center or the park system. And that was a recommendation in the master plan that the council may want to consider kind of achieving that goal. I think it's pretty atypical to have a cost recovery standard for the outdoor park system unless you have a very specific, you know, programming, program or service that you're delivering, like soccer programming or like football or baseball or something along those lines. And we could certainly look at that, but at this point, we haven't anticipated any cost recovery.
That was not the reason for my question because I would think that that should not be included
Okay.
in any cost recovery calculation. I think that programming, yes, you know. And to some degree, if there's programming with the outside aquatics program, that likely should be recoverable, especially like the, the summer daycare program, all that.
So let me, let me do, so yes, so, and, and I'll touch on that here in a moment. We talked a little bit more about the community center, but cost recovery for the last 10 years for this, as we've looked at it for the community center, has excluded capital. And so it has just been essentially the operating cost for the facility. And that's one of the things that as we're going through the feasibility study and we're talking in particular with some of our competitive competitors and benchmark facilities, I've asked them to drill down very specifically in their cost recovery rates and whether that covers capital or operating. I think historically what we've seen is that it's much more typical for the self-sufficiency rates to be calculated just on operating expenses. So you look to some other stream of revenue, i.e. a sales tax to cover the ongoing maintenance.
That, that would, I would concur with that principle. I think we need to take a look at the decision that was made back in 2014 to take operation, operational costs out and not have that allocated to, to the Parks and Recs. And I, I, I think we really need to reconsider that whether an operational component, baseline operational component needs to be included in the budget for, and not have it be something that Parks and Recs needs to recover in their cost.
Well, that kind of in this maintenance category. So before we move on to the next one, any other thoughts, comments? The one thing that we don't have included here, and we will add, we talked about it and we just didn't get it added today, is a vehicle. So if, if we bring forward a request for additional staff, you will see a corresponding increase in a vehicle and potentially some other equipment to aid in that. So if we add people, Taylor has a truck right now that he's able to use, but he is also sharing some equipment and, and the larger trucks dependent, depending on the project with Public Works. So we're kind of working through those needs and what, what we want to bring forward and make sense.
I have one more question. In a previous slide, there was the delineation between green, I think staff was doing, and gray was what was going to be contracted out. I saw the mowing info on there and I recall a few months back, we had spoken with, I think Brent. And I understand that next year, or I guess later this year, we're going to be going back to reevaluate that next five-year contract. Is that what that would be? Or is this a separate mowing contract? Okay.
So if, if you're looking at this specific document, it's the current amount of our mowing contract. But if you look at this overarching all parks handout, that eighty-five thousand and change is in anticipation of the upcoming bid.
Okay.
So we anticipate it's going to be at least a five percent increase from what we currently pay.
Okay. Sounds good.
At the bottom of your last page, you talk about the NRPA field report. It's 2016. It's a bit dated, but it talks about the fact that the median cost per acre, is that right?
Correct.
Is seven thousand, six hundred and forty-four.
Correct.
And it's my understanding that we have about thirty-eight acres, thirty-nine acres total.
We, we, if you count all of Streamway, it gets up there. But the part that Taylor's working on is roughly thirty acres.
So you've really reduced the amount. Is that what's included in here is the thirty acres for the stream for that?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. So you've only included the acreage that he maintains.
Correct.
Okay. So if you were to multiply that times the, the cost in terms of thirty-eight, thirty-nine acres times seven thousand, six hundred and forty-four, and that's 2016 cost. It's, it, it exceeds your total cost right now, right? In other words, the budget that you have for two hundred and sixty-six thousand total is actually less than what the average is for maintenance of parks.
Correct.
We are underfunded right now.
Yeah, we're definitely underfunded right now. And I mean, that is an average. So there'll be some, like Shawnee Mission has this gargantuan two thousand acre park, right? That's, that's a significantly lower cost per acre than say Rotary Park here in Mission. But you're right.
Yes, we have been historically underfunded. Part of that, I think, is also driven by amenities in the park, right? So you'll see a pretty wide fluctuation. So we don't have a lot of, there's not, you know, turf maintenance for ball fields. There's not striping. There's not a lot of those things that could factor into costs in other communities. So part of that is size and part of that is just what, what we're offering or programming in our parks.
Restroom.
Correct.
Right.
Penn, could I ask, could you just give a brief breakdown, definition wise, of what sustainable practices are? I'm, at, at some point in time, as the city moves forward in a positive motif, if you will, I would like to see sustainability not separated out because if we did the business model around sustainable practices, it wouldn't be separate. It would be integrated into our daily practices. So because I, I get worried that a citizen is going to look at this and say, well, it costs too much to do something sustainable. I'd just like a better understanding of how you're portraying. I can't read this. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Actually, do you have the memo? If you have the memo, go to, if you'll go to page seven in, in the memo. And it sort of breaks down and, and sustainable practices, that may be a very good point. We may want to change that terminology as we present potential budgets, you know, to the community. But right now that includes, or the things that Penn has included in that budget category, if you will, include, you know, transition to more environmentally friendly pest control, perennial and native plant care, utilities, playground inspections, litter control, parking lot and trail maintenance. So there are, there are some things that people are not going to think of if you just say they're sustainable elements, right? So we probably need to think about.
Yeah. And we were, we were trying to come up with an overarching concept that, that included like long-term considerations on the impacts of the, the ground, the trees initially. But if you're thinking like holistically sustainable, any kind of preventative maintenance on our But if you're thinking like holistically sustainable, any kind of preventative maintenance on our facilities would, would be wrapped into that as well because we don't want to just let something deplete for 10 years and then have to build something brand new. We want to take care of what we've got. So we can, we can look at that and, and kind of assess a better way to organize it.
Thanks.
Right. Okay.
Yeah. And it looks like the bucket that's in the memo was more of a catch-all for everything that isn't turf care, landscaping or facility maintenance. Because I don't think most people would think of playground inspections, for example, when they're thinking sustainability. So it seems, yeah, like that label is maybe a little.
Yeah. But that's a great example though, because when you consider a $400,000 input, the last thing you want to have to do is replace that every 10 years. And so, yeah.
Yeah. It seems like the sustainable component would be the playground equipment, how it's built and what it's made of.
What, what components go into it? Yeah.
And what we may want to do as we move forward and, and craft a specific ballot language and the messaging is we may want to come up with some, you know, guiding principles or values that will be applied. And I think we had this conversation in just in talking about the planning commission decision and their conversations around universal design because we weren't explicit in, in that presentation that that was a factor. So I think that's probably a better way to approach it so that the, the voters and our residents who are considering this, bless you, know that there are things that, that we, these are the values that we have and they're going to be applied to all things that we do, whether that's the construction materials, whether that is the native plantings, whether that is the chemicals that are used in our park systems, all of those kinds of things. Okay. Any other questions about?
Just one comment, just a request that I hope we were able to consider electrical equipment as part of that sustainable conversation too. If, if it's feasible, just even considering it as things age out and need to be replaced in some of that landscape equipment and stuff like that. I think that would certainly be a sustainable area as well. And I think we've already kind of talked about that. So stop me if, you know, that's already on your radar, but just wanted to make sure I put that on the record.
No, that's great feedback and we'll definitely make sure that's a factor.
Okay. I'll trade you places. And just to kind of follow up on that conversation about sustainability. So maybe we'll take a quick detour and say, I, I would say that if we think about kind of the values that we want to communicate that are important to us as we move forward with park improvements and park maintenance in the future, I think sustainability is one of those. I would think that inclusivity and accessibility would certainly be other factors. Are there other things that come to mind quickly that we might want to think about?
Depending on what kind of grass you have in a given park, you have to have a water system to support that. And water is expensive and it's also a natural resource that we don't want to waste water either. So depending, you have to do things on the front end of things, I think, in terms of your planning, whatever kind of grass warrants, you know, playtime and stuff with kids and ball games and stuff in concert with the conservation of the water that has to be used to make, to maintain it. I think we've got to look at that as we move on in parks. I think the water conservation is a big deal, I personally.
I agree. And sometimes the, the, the best use is maybe not grass, but clover or other types of things that are green, covers the ground, prevents mud, but isn't such high maintenance.
And one of the things I know we've talked about off and on, it's, it's woven in places in the master plan is, is also using the parks as an opportunity to educate about sustainable practices, about native plantings, whether that's tree ID, ID plaques, which I know Mary was just talking about the other night. That's been a focus of, of the PRT, but just sort of that educational component as well about the investment that we're making.
I will, I will say one thing, that identity of the parks through the current, current signs we have has made such a difference. Not only knowledge base of where you're going, but they look really good and they're all kind of congruent and mesh with the city and they look really good.
And that's one that we kind of forget. That was a really high priority coming out of the master plan is where are your, where are the parks in Mission? We don't even really know where they are. So that wayfinding component and that branding component. And you'll remember when we were, we were sort of ahead of where we are now. We took a step back with the park signage in particular to align with the overall city branding. And I drove past a couple of parks today and it just, I had that same feeling. Every time I see those signs, even after however long they've been up, it just makes such a difference in terms of how I know where I am. I have that sense of place. Okay. So let's, if we could go back to the PowerPoint. So maintenance is a big component, but probably a smaller impact on the resources available through Parks and Recreation Sales Tax, at least initially from our perspective and, and recommendations. But again, I think an important message as we go forward to the public to say, we haven't put all of our eggs. We hear what you're saying about maintenance of our parks and we're dedic, you know, there are not just these sales tax resources that are available to meet the, the priorities and the things that you've identified as being important. So outdoor park improvements, I think more so than any other time that I've been here in Mission, this governing body is just chomping at the bit to get improvements made in our outdoor park system. And it's really exciting and fun to see and think about. We started in late 2019 to go through that conceptual park planning process. Parents in my life and it was, so. We know we've been slowed. We've talked about the fact that our processes, we intended to be a lot further down the road, a lot sooner than we were or are in the conceptual park planning processes, but we got slowed by COVID. But we really wanted to take that, those park master plans, bring those down to the individual park level so that we could start to develop order of magnitude costs as we thought about potential renewal of the sales tax so that we could think about other funding sources that might be available to us outside of general fund revenues or the Parks and Recreation Sales Tax. And as you know, we've already been successful with the conceptual plans for Mohawk and securing $400,000 in land and water conservation grant funds. But, but knowing what we want allows us to really then sit down and, and start to seek out other ways to fund the amenities or the improvements that we want. We know we started our work with Mohawk and this is just a compilation of the work that we've done in Mohawk, Waterworks, Broadmoor, and then in different fashion, we had, we did not put together a stakeholder group, but the improvements at Streamway were sort of an offshoot of the dog park conversations that occurred surrounding Broadmoor Park and looking at a potential option for that. We have identified currently the order of magnitude costs somewhere between nine and a half and $10 million of improvements. Now, understand that those are Cadillac numbers at this point, right? And so as we move into and through renewal of a sales tax and implementation of these, there's some flexibility that's built into that. Okay. So we can make decisions about size and scale of playground structures or size and scale of restrooms as we, as we think more specifically about phasing. So that's a big number. As I mentioned, I think there are opportunities for potentially some value engineering. We, there's that opportunity to say, how else can we fund this? Can we get partnerships? Are there grant opportunities? Do we want to do any sort of crowdsourced funding for, you know, certain things in a park? And then over what horizon should these improvements be made? We put these in, I know we're talking specifically about a 10-year sales tax, but these may be bigger than a 10-year horizon. And particularly if you think about what we have or haven't done in our outdoor parks. I also know I've heard this council, you know, express an appetite to do, accelerate them and do them quickly. But I just wanted to, to make sure that we keep that in our mind as we kind of go through these conversations that we hope there will be a renewal of a sales tax after this next 10-year period. So we don't have to look at necessarily that finite point in time.
Laura. One, one quick idea is, you know, years ago, we tried to establish a park for all, which was going to be a, a special park that anybody could go to, but it was totally accessible to people in wheelchairs and things of that nature. I don't know how, but maybe pick out four or five of the parks that are used the most and have at least one or two pieces of equipment, playground-wise, bench-wise or other that meet that need that we never got to fulfill in the park for all. Is that a possibility?
Absolutely. And I think we've had that conversation very specifically as we kind of talked about the phase one of, of Mohawk. Even though the playground structure there is not included in this first phase, I, we heard, I think Penn and I both heard a lot of feedback from the council in terms of that, that accessibility, those design elements, thinking about amenities so that in every, and again, I think that's, if we make that, that overarching value about accessibility and inclusivity, then we're very intentional in how we build out and the elements that we put in those parks. So in the memo, I didn't include it in the PowerPoint presentation, but I did include just generally kind of, at this point, the order of magnitude costs for each park. We do anticipate that we would be going out in the second week of May to kind of just take these plans. You know, we've had separate stakeholder meetings and public meetings around all the parks. I think we've talked about, we actually talked about doing this in November and December of last year of kind of taking all of these conceptual plans back out to the public. And then none of us wanted to be out in public meeting settings until recently. And so I think the plan is as we move towards a decision on a, a rate in the sales tax ballot language that we do want to have that opportunity to kind of let the public see and feel this again. We would do that in anticipation of the PRT. So the PRT, both the PRT and the council would have the benefit of any additional sort of public comment. Next slide, please. And before I jump into sales tax capacity, in the memo, we did just talk about some of the remaining community center projects. As I mentioned, we've used a, a large portion of sales tax dollars since 2013 to catch up. There are still several projects, large projects that are outstanding that we didn't get to in this first 10-year period. And those were identified in the memo and included a roof replacement of about $400,000. Parking lot replacement and maintenance, flooring replacement. So we are doing the locker rooms in 20, this year, 2022 budget. So those will be done. But replacement of all of the tile in these north bathrooms is something that's still outstanding. Replacement of the walking track, that's been in the plan and been deferred for a variety of reasons. It didn't get a lot of use these last two years. And so the, the wear and tear is, we, we think that that would extend probably past 2023 and then an elevator replacement. So those are kind of the big capital projects that remain here. And then just in our experience over the last 10 years, we know that it takes somewhere in the neighborhood of $250,000 to $300,000 a year that should be earmarked for the community center just to maintain appropriate replacement cycles for things like fixtures, tables, chairs, room remodels, blinds, technology. So remember though, that what we've relied on that $90,000 in special parks and recreation money to do some piece of that. So not all of this money would necessarily be drawn from potentially the Parks and Recreation Sales Tax. But we think over the next 10 years, it's probably safe to say that there could be about three and a half million dollars of, of needs here so that we don't get behind and have significant deferred maintenance again. And again, you know, we're in the midst of the feasibility study. So, you know, barring a recommendation that says this facility can't get anywhere close to a cost recovery that the council is interested in or supportive of, we'll look at some of those other options. And so that could change some of these numbers, but just, we wanted to provide that historical perspective at this point, if it's used as a more traditional fitness and community center, what that has looked like. And then for the aquatic center, as I mentioned, there's probably over the next 10 years, about a million and a half dollars. Just there are pumps and UV filters and painting and deck repairs and new slides and diving board replacement and all sorts of things. So those are kind of the big buckets, if you will, that we think about. We haven't talked about replacement of the Rock Creek Trail that still has a great deal of significant useful life, but that's one of the things that depends maintenance numbers. He's built in on an annual basis, the cost to replace some of, you know, some of those kinds of things.
Does the Rock Creek Trail include the market area?
Yes, the Rock Creek Trail goes through the market area.
Okay. But when you're talking about maintenance, you're including that acreage that encompasses the market area.
The market itself is separate, but it includes the trail setting through.
Okay. So this does not include the cost of equipment, repair and other things that we're thinking about for that market area.
Correct. Correct. It, it just includes the cost of the concrete trail going through it.
What's the rationale of keeping that separate from parks and rec as a concept?
As a concept, the Rock Creek Trail is from point A to point B.
Yes.
So it's easier to assign a team member to controlling, you know, the maintenance of, you know, trimming, edging, those types of things.
Yeah. My, my question, I guess, is different than that.
Okay.
My question is, why is the market area not considered a park?
We actually have designated it as a park. So we could go back and, and add to this list.
Right.
The mowing and the other things related to that.
Because I think that that park area, that area market, whatever, is, is used a lot more than, for instance, Birch Park. Birch Park, hardly anybody knows where it is or what it is, right? Birch Park is that little green area that's next to the Mission Bowl that has that little cul-de-sac. That area is, that is Birch Park.
It looks like a missing house.
It does. That's exactly.
We didn't even get a sign. So, but it's at the end of my street. We're there all the time.
Yeah. I think Birch Park, I had suggested we make it into the dog park.
You'd have some folks on that street to talk to.
And that might be one thing to keep in mind for the marketing purposes, the extent that we're using names for things that people don't know what they are, like Birch Park or Rotary Park or, you know, I think it would be helpful to have addresses or locations attached to these things as.
A map will be better. So I would anticipate that we would use, so I, I think our, I'll jump ahead of myself a little bit. I think our plan, we had success with the communication plan that we rolled out with the renewal for the street sales tax. And so I think our, our thought and our preliminary conversations with Prox has been to sort of follow that same model, which would include a newsletter and a very interactive piece on the website. And so a map certainly would, would help there where we identify those parks. I don't, I don't envision this level of detail with all of these names kind of being a part of that, that we talk about specific maintenance standards and probably have some better narrative in terms of, here's what you could expect, you know, kind of a before and after almost look at, you know, with this type of investment, this is what you could expect in your parks. But that's a good point. We just need to make sure people know what it is. So we'll get the market site added.
Have another.
No, that's fine. So that's why we're here.
Our property where the NEF printing used to be, what, what is that considered vacant?
Vacant ground.
That is, that is building to the Rock Creek Trail.
No.
That's the one that cuts through the.
No, that, the NEF property. No, that the NEF property is the one that sits behind Pride Cleaners and Panera. And Unleashed. So that it's vacant property at this point.
It's a marsh. It's actually.
I was thinking about where the RV is parked, just off of Mission Market Site.
No, no, no. Harley Woods Building. That's right.
Laura, if we are talking about the market site being qualified as a park, we should probably also add that to the other needs and wants list, market site improvements, because that wasn't a part of the parks conceptual planning, but has been, I would say broadly discussed for quite some time, making, you know, more substantial improvements to that site.
Okay.
And I I know this is probably overkill on the dog park, but as we move into conceptual design and monies toward new things in the parks and things like that, are is the dog park task force going to be reinvented or something? Because you don't want to spend a bunch of money and then have the course change.
I I don't think we've envisioned reinstating the dog park. I mean, I think the the message that has been heard and delivered, and I think the survey results support it. And that is, I don't know where I hid your name tag, Hillary. Sorry. Okay. I I don't know that there's a need based on the priority that was established through the Direction Finder Survey and the priority that the council is assigned, including the earmark of the $200,000 in the budget to sort of kickstart that. So I wouldn't imagine. So when you, when you think about. So when you ask that question, tell me understand kind of what.
Well, one of the, one of the considerations was Broadmoor Park and there was a, they were looking at a design that would include a dog park as part of the whole park. So before I could see any money expended on doing XYZ, if this is going to come up again, you kind of want to do the planning on the front end, I think. So I don't know, I just. No, I'm talking about if the dog park got reestablished, you wouldn't want to put all the money in a park on certain design concepts, and then you need a totally different area for a dog park.
So i- in the concept designs for the conceptual designs for Broadmoor Park, they all include the dog park at this point. And so it would be the quite. The question is, do, does that stay? But it's essentially fencing and grading. So if if the dog park isn't there, the the big message that we heard through kind of that stakeholder process, and I think the public meeting is when we presented the concepts that had the pump track or a splash pad or something like that. They said, simplify it. We don't want all this stuff in the park, right? So the option, that was an option for a location for the dog park. If the dog park did not go in Broadmoor, I think the expectation or anticipated replacement is open green space. Did, I mean, I think the ba- and again, that's based on what we heard from the neighborhood and through that public meeting process. But something I think to test again, when, so there's kind of a final revised concept. It's in the PowerPoint presentation. It's hard to see because I put all four of them on the same slide, but you can kind of see the Broadmoor Park is actually the final concept, and you'll see the parking lot was left in the same location and a lot of the really fancy things were taken out of of that preliminary design.
Thank you. So has it been decided that the dog park will be in Broadmore? I I heard Streamway or no?
Yeah, I think that's still up for, you know, I think that's still up for debate. And I think, I think a dog park is important. It's just as as we move forward and look at evaluating, you know, these things, then we have to make that final decision at some point for the location of the dog park. You know, I think it may be, you know, we we, as we move toward establishing the ballot language, we're also going to be talking about a proposal for a 200 unit apartment building and project that is directly across the street from Broadmoor Park. And we may want to go back and revisit whether or not we think a dog park across the street from 200 units makes sense. Particularly, A, because we know it's a small size to begin with, and B, if if that is where we want it, I mean, I just the the consideration of will that be, if that apartment project moves forward, would that be a dog park, you know, in essence, for just those residents because of the proximity? Yes.
I apologize. I'm going to hop back just a little bit because I listened in my car on the way here. But you had mentioned that, you know, working with Crux to create, you know, narratives around what kind of parks will produce and a little pamphlet, just like we did. So I'm, I'm curious if we're planning to include all the park conceptual plans in that. I mean, you may not be there yet, but I think I I I kind of struggle with the idea of, you know, laying out these park plans, but knowing we're not going to deliver on all of them right now. Knowing even in 10 years, we don't have the funds to deliver on them. So I think I'd really like to see us, you know, decide what it is we're going to do. If it's, you know, if we have $10 million, we've got five for, you know, as the 1.5 for, you know, aquatics, 3.5 for PCC, and the other five for parks. Let's take that five, decide exactly what we're going to do and put that in the narrative, because otherwise, I feel like we're kind of selling that Cadillac.
So to say. Yeah, no, I think you're absolutely right. But I think we have to, so we have to get through probably over the course of the next six weeks, those conversations, decide where we're comfortable in setting that rate. Then we can kind of estimate what's that total amount we're going to collect over 10 years and what can we real, we create that same hierarchy, if you will, as was sort of established with the sales tax in 2013. And we say, we know in the next 10 years, we're going to do these things. I think, you know, there's some potential to say we have bigger plans, we intend to continue an investment in an outdoor park, but these may be improvements that extend outside of this next 10 year period. But I think that messaging piece will come once we know what that rate is and what we think we're going to generate.
Um, yeah. Was there any conversation yet tonight? And again, I was kind of in and out. I apologize. I had to come from a work event. But was there any conversation about the prior, I know that you listed out, you know, by size, the the park cost, but was there any conversation like we've had in the past with regards to one park or, you know, piece by piece phases at different parks? Because I think that's something that, you know, folks would also be interested in and thinking about this timeline that we have to go back to PRT. You know, it's pretty, it's coming up really soon and just not fully knowing, you know, what amenity is at what parks are going to be. You know? I don't know. That's, you know, it's just a lot of stuff. What are, you know?
Well, the the one thing that was discussed is a possibility, if we did a bond, you know, for beyond the 10 years, you basically could speed up the process for actually doing these as opposed to just relying on the sales tax for this 10 year period. So in other words, if you could actually do a bond for actually doing the park system that we that we envisioned, it could actually be sped up and then costed out over time with debt service.
I, yeah, I think two different things. You could, you could bond it to accelerate it. Again, I think we can get pretty quickly there. I mean, what, one of the things that we know is waterworks we need to time, right? We, the the timing of that is going to be related to the reconstruction and rebuild of Rushton Elementary. So there are still some timing questions. And then, no, I don't think we've decided, you know, decided that. But I think we can get to to some of that more easily than we may anticipate at this point. Okay, let's go next slide, please. We'll just kind of talk about capacity. Oh, yep. So sales tax capacity. And this is just kind of, for those of you who are around, when we talked about sales, uh, street sales tax, this is a little bit of a old news or refresher, but the city has the authority to levy sales tax up to, I never remember the number, 2%, right? Up to 3%. So 2% for general purposes and 1% for special purposes or dedicated purposes. Currently, we have 1% that's levied for general purposes, and all of that money currently goes into general fund operations. Then we have our dedicated street sales tax, which was renewed and actually increased last fall from the quarter cent to three eighths of a cent. And then Parks and Recreation. And again, that was done, that decision was very deliberate on the part of the council, based on the needs that were identified through the street inventory and the the pace at which, excuse me, you wanted to invest, particularly in the rebuild and and maintenance of residential streets. And then, so our current sales tax rate, at least through the end of March of next year, is this 9.725%. And that we increased to that effective April 1st, when the new street sales tax went into effect. So based on our current sales tax rates and the total capacity available upon expiration of the current Parks and Recreation Sales Tax, we have five, basically five, up to five eighths of a percent that could be allocated. I did want to just touch briefly for some who didn't have the benefit of the conversation last fall. One of the things that we look at when we think about using a sales tax to fund improvements and particularly improvements that are also used by others outside of our community is what's referred to as the pull factor, and that is what is our draw into the community? What percentage of the sales tax dollars spent in Mission are actually being spent by people who don't live here? And there's the state Department of Revenue puts out a report each year. So our pull factor is currently about 38%. So when we fund things like streets with a sales tax or parks with a sales tax, we're sharing that responsibility from a fiscal standpoint with both residents and non-residents in our community. And in the memo, I didn't put it in the the PowerPoint presentation, but just as kind of a point of reference. So pull factors around us for some communities, Merriam, for example, has a pull factor of about 80%. Almost exclusively because of the car dealerships that are there and the way that sales tax is paid on automobile purchases in the state of Kansas. Roland Park has a pull factor of about 30%. And Prairie Village has a negative pull factor of about 52%. And that's, if you think about the larger shopping opportunities, whether that's a Target right on the other side of the state line for them or some other factors, that's not necessarily a surprising. But that's kind of where we fall in that standpoint. So next slide, please. So when we think about then, what's that capacity? And what does that generate? These are what we're looking at in roughly estimated 2022 revenues. You'll see that three eighths of a cent generates just over a million dollars, a quarter cent, about $670,000. A half cent, 1.3 and five eighths of a cent, 1.6, almost 1.7 million dollars. One of the things, the other things to note as we if there are development projects in which sales tax is committed as a part of an incentive package, these dedicated sales taxes are not part of that. So as we see new new development, these things can grow potentially incrementally. So any questions about either capacity or amount generated? Yes, Ken?
One of the things that I think we discussed last year was the issue of what should be our maximum sales tax cumulative sales tax. And one of the discussions around the street sales tax was that if we were going to increase the street sales tax, it would be of interest to maybe decrease the Parks and Recs sales tax to maintain a cumulative level that is equal to what it was prior to the. I think it's an issue of priorities. And what what are we asking people to pay for in regards to sales tax? And especially with inflation costs the way they are. I know that this is one way to get income for revenue for the city's projects. But I am concerned about the cumulative level, and especially when you have in, you know, programs or or development projects like the Gateway that's trying to ask for two cent addition to 2% added sales tax to it. I don't know that that's something that we want to be doing in in regards to the overall cumulative cost of sales tax in this community.
I I do think when we had the street sales tax discussions, that there was not a clear consensus on holding the sales tax flat or reverting to what it was prior to the street sales tax. I think that was definitely expressed by by you and maybe a couple of others, but I just wanted to clarify that I don't think that was a consensus of council at the time.
That that still remains my position. I believe that we have to be sensitive to the fact that we're competing with other communities that have sales tax, cumulative sales tax that are lower than ours.
I would challenge whether we are actually competing. And if you went out and asked 10 Mission residents what our sales tax rate was versus Prairie Village, if any of them could tell you, or if everyone does, you know, back of the napkin math and says Johnson County is 10% I calculated as 10% in my head. I I know that's what I do, and I know that, you know, maybe there are some people, you know, who are her going from one city to another, but I would guess that it's not very prevalent, but.
So. So let me just, so if if you have your packet available, I would ask you to flip to page 11. I did not include the table in the PowerPoint presentation, but in the memo, there was a a table which illustrated the sales tax rates in surrounding communities. And I think just as we go forward in this conversation, I need to go get a little more granular in that. So for example, in Prairie Village, who has, according to this table, the lowest overall sales tax rate. And if I go look at the rates that are established in Corinth or the Village, there's probably at least a 1% CID there. So I'll go back and update this. That kind of shows overall, so where people are doing probably the majority of shopping in some of these other cities, the same thing, there is either CID or a TDD, the Price Shopper in Roland Park and the Lowe's. So I'll go back and layer on. I picked up just the base sales tax rates in these other communities, but I think for comparison purposes, it probably helps us to look at what the highest rate is in each of these surrounding communities. Yeah.
I don't know who is calling on people. I personally would like to see us stay at 3/8 cents. I think, you know, we've, if if we were looking at an increase, I could see that concern, but considering how the language can be shaped in terms of renewing an existing sales tax of 3/8, people are going to vote no, you know, if there's an overwhelming consensus, I think they'd vote no for a, you know, 1/4 cent or a 3/8 cent. So I think we should, you know, move ahead and, you know, I don't think $600,000 a year is going to cut. You know, what staff is presenting us, whereas, you know, we can talk about an extra $400,000 a year by, you know, putting a, you know, I can't do quick math of 1/4 to 3/8 conversions. I apologize. But I mean, just so nominal, so so nominal. And looking at the table, I mean, yeah, that'll put us up, you know, right behind Fairway, but I will be interested in seeing what Laura comes back with in terms of overall pictures as we look at shopping centers, et cetera. And these aren't, we're not just raising taxes to raise taxes, and we're not. We're just keeping it consistent. It's to deliver on what residents are telling us that they want and making generational changes in our parks that have been neglected for decades and decades. So I see this as high priority, and I think we saw that in our survey results.
I think, I think it's a balance too. I really do. I don't think anybody has felt the hit as a lot of seniors and elderly and people, as we are at the grocery store right now, housing costs have gone ridiculous. I think if they had to look right now and just make it, make a choice between fixing a park and buying their food for a couple of months, I'm gonna think they're gonna go with the food. And I totally support keeping the parks up. I can afford it, but a lot of people can't. And I think right now, putting anything on a ballot is just kind of scary when it comes to any taxation. People are just at a threshold of of chaos right now. And the groceries are horrible. Ham was $2.99 a pound last, it's 7.50 a pound. It's just like little things like that. And I know that has nothing to do with, but it does to an average person, I think.
Well, the state has not made the progress we anticipated that they would make on exemption of sales tax on food, which could, we anticipated was going to be playing more significantly into this conversation at this point. which could, we anticipated was going to be playing more significantly into this conversation at this point. I think Ben, did you have a comment?
Just echoing Hillary, I mean, people have asked for these things loud and clear and yes, it is a balance, but I think we can't fail to respond to the, the survey, the direction finder results.
Okay, for, I'm going to move, if we're okay, next slide, please, into just sort of a recap of mail ballot, ballot election. And again, tonight is just to get all of this that's been floating around for the last couple of years, kind of back on the table, back at the forefront of our brains as we really sort of buckle down and move towards decisions by the middle of June. So as we talked about the existing sales tax sunsets, March 31st of 2003, and the state requires us to begin and end sales taxes only at the start of a quarter. And we have to provide notice one full quarter in advance of when the sales tax is to take effect. They publish a manual and an update quarterly that is available online to all businesses that, that gives lead time, gives a quarterly time for a change in a sales tax rate. So they can reprogram cash registers and do all those sorts of things. So in order to, for there to be no lapse in the collection of a Parks and Recreation Sales Tax potentially, we would have to give notice to the Kansas Department of Revenue prior to December 31st of this year, so that they have it to give notification in that first quarter of, of next year, same cycle that we applied. So as we, and so as we've looked at windows of opportunity and potential election dates, we talked about mail ballot elections. We talked about going on primary and general elections. And the council earlier this year is, is part of our discussions in the retreat that we had back in February, identified your preference as being a mail ballot election to be held in September. So again, essentially the same timeframe that we held for the street sales tax. So when we think about what that schedule is, I had, I didn't change the font color on this, I'm sorry, I caught it on every other slide, but this one. So kind of the process for a mail ballot election, the election office specifies that kind of that calendar and that timeframe by June 15th, a little bit of wiggle room, probably till the end of June. But our goal is to adopt a resolution calling for the election at our June 15th City Council meeting, which would include the rate at which we are asking for the sales tax to be renewed. Then we would really ramp up. I mean, I think if, and, and we'll come back as we talk about that messaging in that campaign and we'll share with you. Got some really specific data that we collected in with Crocs on the street sales tax. And so we know very specifically what, where we saw spikes in social media hits and website hits based on when we did specific posts or when, when things happened. So again, I think we have a good plan. I think we're going to generally follow that same plan. And so we ramped that up, I think August, is that right, Emily? I think August is when we really rolled out kind of that first communication and then we just hit it really consistently. And we may want to do a few things, we're going to have, fingers crossed, we're going to have a groundbreaking for Mohawk Park in July. We'll have the tennis courts that are going to be refurbished and opened in June. And so there'll be some other things that we can kind of start to build some energy and excitement around. Yes, Ken?
And if we include the Mission Market site, could we include those improvements with those materials too as part of the parks?
And so then the election office mails out the ballots, the first week of September, they're due back to the election office. By September 20th, we get preliminary election results that same day. And then they go through their final process of certifying the results the following week. Then at our October meeting, we adopt an ordinance that certifies or levies the sales tax. And then that information is all provided to the Kansas Department of Revenue. So similar, that's kind of the roadmap for how we move forward. In a special mail ballot election, they mail it to active registered voters. In last September's election, we had about just slightly over 7,000 active registered voters. I think our turnout in that election was about 23%, as I recall. And we did pass that sales tax initiative by 77, almost 78%. With the September 20th special mail ballot election, the voter registration process closes 21 days prior to that election date. And so that would mean voter registration closes Tuesday, August 30th. But with, I think with the August primary this year and the interest in that, there'll probably be big pushes for voter registration prior to that. Next slide, please. So what are the next steps? I think really kind of continue to refine the maintenance requirement. I think we've had a lot of good feedback this evening, some additional things that we need to go back to the drawing board, build into the models and the things that we're considering for the outdoor parks. I think we're pretty solid on the community center and the, the MFAK that week of May 9th, and I think we're targeting at this point, the Thursday of that week, to have kind of those public input forums on the proposed conceptual park plans. At least at this point, we've talked about an open house format where we would have those boards and we would just allow people to sort of come into the room and interact and, and react. And we'd have staff positioned. May 16th, the PRT has been sort of, they've spent a fair amount of time in kind of these maintenance standards and conversations. One of the budget recommendations that they forwarded to me before the first of April included a recommendation for additional staff to perform maintenance. So that'll be factored, that's one of the pieces that will be factored in, as I mentioned, when we bring forward our general fund recommendations. So they're familiar with parts and pieces of this, but we want to kind of take it all back to them for final consideration and a, then a formal recommendation to you all, including their recommendation on a rate. So you at least have that perspective to consider. Then we have another work session scheduled at the end of May, following that PRT recommendation that brings all of this back together again for you. And then June 1st, at the Finance and Administration Committee meeting, we would look at that draft ballot language and then June 15th, potentially approving the ballot language. And I think, next slide, but I think that's the end. So other pieces of, are there other pieces of information that are important to you that are missing that you feel like you will want or need as we continue through these conversations? Yes, Ken?
Can you discuss the possibility of bond, use of bonds for the park development and amortizing the cost over a longer period of time?
So I think I've said this before, if it's me who's bringing you a recommendation, I am going to align any bond scenario and debt issuance with the life of this particular Parks and Recreation Sales Tax. You, you always, when you look at that issuance of debt, you always want an identified repayment source. And I think particularly if we look at an acceleration at the rate, which I think you all would be comfortable with, I don't want to be trying to come up with at the end of the next 10 years, 500,000, let's say $500,000 in debt service that needs to come from someplace else if we aren't successful in renewing a sales tax. So that's what we did with the MFAK, we aligned it with the life of the sales tax. I think we, we could look at that. So there are some of these park amenities and improvements. And again, as we talk about phasing, some of these things we can do on a page you go basis, right? And so, so we'll look at that, but I think once we set the rate, then we can kind of build out what is a scenario similar to what we showed you recently on the street side. Until we know how much we're going to have, it's, it's difficult to know, you know, how we might want to build out that, that bond scenario. But I think you could take, I don't have those numbers right in front of me, but I think if you did a, what did we have a, if you did a $5 million issue, what were we looking, we were looking at about half a million dollars. You know, so we can play around preliminarily with some of those scenarios and just say, okay, so if, if you were to look at accelerating $5 million worth of these improvements through a bond issue, then how much does that leave you annually, right, to accomplish some of these other things? And again, I think we will also be, well, we're coming back at next week's committee meeting with a question to you while we have the opportunity to, for example, apply for additional land and water conservation grant funds for the next phase of Mohawk Park. So we're going to be bringing, you know, so and anything that we can sort of chip away at in terms of other people's money that may be available to us, we'll certainly explore and, and bring forward. So we, I mean, I think you'll have options if we can get this renewed. You know, we can build and, and I, I can just take this, they won't be that much different, the scenarios that, that Bruce Kimmel built for the street debt issues that we were looking at recently and apply that sort of those same costs to this scenario.
So what would happen if this does not pass?
Well, then I think we have, I think we're, I think we're back to the drawing board in terms of, A, first, I think we would have to understand why it didn't pass. So was the rate too high? Did people not agree with the improvements that we wanted to make, et cetera? And we may have to scale, you know, you, you would have to scale some of those things back. But then I think you would have to just look at, how do we do this? Do we do that, there's still grant opportunities that we could pursue? We'd have to just go back and look at the other ways. Is it something you want to use mill, you know, for? Is it something that you want to? You know, I don't, I don't think you want to take away from streets to fund parks, but you know, what's the balance? I mean, I think we would absolutely, if we don't have renewal of this. And one of the things that you may recall, we talked about with the streets was at, at that point, did we want to kind of move away from a streets, a separate street sales tax and a park sales tax and go with a capital improvement sales tax, which is something, for example, that the city of Roland Park has done. And it was the council's appetite at the time to say, no, we feel like the messaging can be better connected with the specific dedicated sales taxes. So we could try again, you know, we could sort of go back to the drawing board and then come back with a revised request for a sales tax selection. It certainly is going to create at least a year, I would say, delay in implementation of, of our plans. Yeah.
So this, just stop me if this isn't the forum. I remember back in November, when we were looking at the comprehensive plan draft that for the next few years, there were sections in there, one of which that stands out was converting one of our city lots just south of Johnson Drive into like a rain space or like a native grass area with just like a green space, basically. If we, you know, so how does some of that stuff tie into what we're talking about here with kind of the park plan for the next 10 years? Because, you know, let's say we wave a magic wand and we're going to convert one of those lots. You know, that would be, I would imagine additional maintenance on when we were kind of talking about Taylor's run of things. So were those options in the, and I know we're not talking about the comp plan yet. Were those kind of a realistic in the next 10 years type of thing? Or is that just more of a, hey, these are just ideas for someday way down the road?
So I'd probably answer that in two ways. So one of the things that I think you're going to see in the final recommended comp plan is some of those really specific locations for things like rain gardens to come out and that'd be more generally to talk about pursuing opportunities where it makes sense. So it, but those are more storm water, stormwater related than I would say parks maintenance. There, there's a maintenance component to any sort of, you know, bio swell or rain garden or anything that we're going to put in. But I think it's more a stormwater emphasis than it would be a park, park maintenance. Now, we do have, you know, some of those natural features anticipated within some of the parks and those have been factored into the maintenance numbers that we've seen. But that's a good question.
I just want to tell you, I, I'm excited about some of the park options. I really am. One of the things we're going to get into on, on some of the priorities that those of us who submitted their budget requests or priorities for the city, the more beautification we can make it with all the bad stuff happening, it makes you feel so proud to live in this city. Just the signage on the parks alone is really good. Sidewalks are good, this treats we've put money into and it's showing. People can get down and through the, through the downtown area easier. So many good things and we need to keep that momentum going.
Yeah, and I think we saw that in the direction finder with, you know, it was different scales, but the majority of people said that they were willing to make more investment in our community to get some of these things that they're wanting, like, you know, the better park maintenance, the streets, all of that. Cause I think people are seeing that it's paying off.
And again, I think it, you know, some of the pace will be slower because if, I said it earlier, if there's one lesson I hope we learn, and I think we're still learning is that is if we're gonna put it in an improvement, improve it, let's figure out how we're going to take care of it. Right?
Yeah, that's been kind of like my thought too. Like a lot of these improvements are like, I mean, we look at Broadmoor's Trail, that's a safety issue. And this is like, that's a concern and, and we should be allocating funds towards that. And like, that's a beautification piece too. So yeah, I mean, I'm, yeah, that's kind of where like my perspective is. A lot of these improvements can be also like beautification, but also a safety piece. So, yeah.
Laura, this is just a comment, I'll be, I'll be interested, I know that we've got to figure out the rate first, but you know, in connection to Ken's comment and thinking about, you know, issuing bonds, if we're looking at say $5 million for an example, I'll be really, you know, with the parks totaling 10, I'll be really interested in seeing how, you know, we pull out what elements. And I know again, it's, you know, Cadillac here, but like, I think that's really where we're going to start feeling, you know, real excitement is thinking, okay, Broadmoor, I have no idea what $2.5 million could do at Broadmoor. That's a lot of money. But you know, if there's a playground in the trail that gets done and like new soccer field, you know, and just pulling, okay, that's, you know, 700 there. Okay, great, Mohawk, let's finish phase two. Okay, stream. I think when we get to that granular level, that's like really where people are going to start being able to get, I know that I'll be really excited when we get there, but I know that if we can give tangible examples also in that, in that messaging, that'll be really helpful.
Yep.
I think it's important to say that it's not that I don't value parks. I just am very, very concerned about the way in which we're asking people to adopt a sales tax. It's not the fact that I don't value what we're trying to do. I don't know that this is the only way we can do it. And that's really part of what I'm saying. For instance, I think that park maintenance is an operational thing. You know, we're asking to establish a sales tax to pay for park maintenance. I think that that should be part of the general cost of doing business in the city. That we're asking.
We, we would not include the maintenance costs that we discussed this evening as we're not recommending that those come out at this point.
Okay, I, I thought it was included in the list.
It was, it's a little confusing, but I think that's, that's when, when you look at, we're talking about to reach that next level of maintenance. And that is, and we'll tip our hands a little bit, you know, I think the, the end of that spreadsheet you saw, you know, an equivalent of almost three FTEs or five part-time employees. We're not going to ask, we're going to ask for something in the 2023 budget. We're not going to ask for that number because we don't have those parks built out to that standard yet, right? So that, those things will come on incrementally, which means that that $100,000 number that we're saying, if that's what it's going to take to move that needle, we believe in terms of the impact on maintenance. So in 2023, we can do that with less than $100,000. And so that's the kind of money that I think we would come back and say that, that's an operational cost within the general fund. So if that was unclear earlier, I apologize, but that, that would be our intent at this point. Although I will put the plug in for leaving the flexibility in the ballot language for operating costs, because you don't know what will happen in another 10 years. And so again, you have that ability as a council, as you set the budget to, and I think, so I think that's something that, that we should consider leaving in probably with a similar commitment that our number one priority is capital.
Yeah, I don't mind flexibility, but I still am in belief that we should have a cap in terms of our cumulative sales tax.
Okay, yep.
And I, I just want to respond to Ken, I'm, I'm right there with. And I, I just want to respond to Ken. I'm, I'm right there with you. I don't want to overtax people. My, my genuine view that I'm coming from is a mom of young children who's embarrassed to take her children to some of our parks. And knowing that I'm not alone in that, and we have got to start investing in what makes people want to come, stay and be here forever. And right now, we don't have that at a lot of our parks. And I, I do think that is so central to what we are. And it doesn't show that we're valuing that in our city right now. And it's definitely huge improvements because of what Penn's done, but we're still, we've got a long ways to go.
Laura, I have a question.
Yep.
Sorry, that was later than I thought it was going to be. I just wanted to make sure that I understand. So the, the debt for the pool will be paid off.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, the debt, the debt for the pool will be retired.
Okay.
When we move into renewal of the next, we make our last debt service payment in 2023.
Okay. And I also just wanted to comment, as a mom of four kids who have spent, keep adding all that probably years in a park. I'm really excited about the ideas of having bathrooms in parks because, you know, especially with little girls, you can't just go behind a tree, which you probably shouldn't do that with little boys either. But it, it really, I can't tell you how many times we had to just run like mad home because, you know, somebody had to go or how many times we left the house and then had to come back before we even got to the park because somebody had to go to the bathroom already. So those really do make a difference. And having water in a park really does make a difference because you could spend more time there and not have to, to journey back home or, you know, whoops, we forgot our water bottles. So those do really, really make a difference when you're in the park with kids.
All right. Any other comments?
Can I ask a question? It's a parks and rec related, but it's not about the budget.
Sure.
How are we doing on getting lifeguards this year?
Thumbs up on lifeguards.
Testing. We're doing really well with lifeguards. We actually just hired two more today. So we are ahead of where we were last year. We're still concerned. Generally, we're behind where we were two years ago or three years ago. But camp staff is where a lot of our focus and stress is right now. So lifeguards, we're looking good.
Good, thank you. So if you know anybody that wants to be a camp counselor, please send them our way. Happy to visit with them. Okay. Well, thank you all. Appreciate your time this evening.
Do you want to reiterate the reminder?